All right, seven o'clock, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome everybody, we'll start off with a roll call, please.
Norine Frieder.
Yes, here.
Adam Hemken.
Here.
Andrea Corey.
Here.
Kelly Moyer.
Here.
Greg Meyer.
Here.
Lisa Schumacher.
Here.
Tyson Search.
Here.
Perfect, give us a quorum, if anybody would stand, and we'll recite the Pledge of Legions, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perfect, thank you. Welcome visitors, we have a good crowd tonight, always good to see a bunch of people here. And we'll run into public comments, see if we have anything they'd like to say tonight. All these people know public comments?
Not yet.
Not yet, there you go. All right, correspondents.
Correspondents, I've got three things. Dr. Ganey and I met with Tara Keys, Tara Keys you might know is the volunteer CMS cross-country coach, and she was the one that was filling in for Ty while he was doing some family stuff. She had a presentation about the cross-country program, and so she shared that presentation with us. I will make a PDF and I'll email it to you. We also got a letter from Stiefel thanking us for the bond sales and having them as our partnership. And then, we'll be talking more about this in the superintendent's report, but we've got a letter from IASB saying we are once again active members, so if you want to pass those around. But I'll be emailing the cross-country PDF to everyone.
Perfect. Thank you very much. We'll go right into our consent agenda, Dr. Grody, if you'd be so kind as to walk us through that.
Yeah, I've got the minutes and the finances, the personnel information, there is no resignations. We have one employment, Dakota Gruen, we're hiring as our custodian. With the high school expansions, we are still needing more custodians, so we're putting him on. We've got no employment of certified personnel. We do have an approved two leaves of absences that need to be added, we got those today. Rita Wallace will be leaving on October 22nd and will be back, she's hoping before her four weeks, but she's asking for four weeks. And then Lindsay Rouse is November 18th, and she'll be going through Christmas. We've got Evan Lucas, he's a volunteer assistant coach, he's going to be for freshman basketball. It's pretty simple, cut and dry, right now we don't have much personnel things going on, and so administration recommends that you approve the consent agenda as presented.
Perfect. Any questions, concerns, or comments regarding the consent agenda? Here, anyone who'd be like to make a motion to approve as presented?
Go ahead.
Fight it out, this is...
I'll make the motion.
Fine, thank you Tyson, second?
I'll second.
Perfect, thank you. Roll call, please.
Hemken.
Yes.
Corey.
Yes.
Moyer.
Yes.
Friedrich.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Schumacher.
Yes.
Search.
Yes.
Perfect. Going to our communications reports and presentations, our enrollment report.
The enrollment report was caught, we had some errors, thank you Mrs. Schumacher. But you've got another copy at your desk, we just have a couple numbers off there. But you can see the numbers haven't changed much.
Perfect. All right, we'll go into our administrative reports, we'll start off with our building report, Mrs.
Miller.
Miller, welcome.
Hi, Miller.
We have had an exciting start to the school year. At the top of our first slide, we have our students that were nominated for the Month of Respect by one of their teachers, each different grade level, so we were really excited. These obviously are just students that were nominated, but we have a lot of students in our school who were definitely deserving of that Spotlight Award. We, underneath that, our Mrs. Brandonberger's Crosscat class took a visit uptown to the first responders at EMS and the fire building, as well as the police station, so we were really thankful that they let our students come and sit in the cars, get pictures, and learn about our first responders. Below that is a picture that took place today, we had our eighth graders that were really excited to dress up as greasers and socias from the outsiders. They went to Ronnie's Theater who played the movie for them, and then they came back and did a portion of their egg drop, so they were very excited to be able to already go on that field trip and see the movie come to life from the book that they've been reading. Next to them is Nurse Molly, who is always spreading kindness and not germs, but she did a presentation for all of our students about hygiene, and she also let everybody know that we have hygiene products in the nurse's office, if any of our fifth or eighth grade students need anything, from hair brushes to toothbrushes to deodorant, hair ties, all the fun things middle schoolers need throughout the day. To the right of that is some pictures from our Apex event, it's a new fundraiser we did this year. It was focused on leadership and character, and if students raised, kind of like a jump rope for heart, where it was a collection of money, if they raised thirty dollars, they got to participate in the color games, as you see there, several of them got nice and colorful. They had a lot of fun, and in nine short days, our school raised three hundred dollars shy of twenty thousand dollars, so we were really excited to partner with them. On our next slide, we have this eagle, which is amazing, our new art teacher, Ms. Shielansky, did some realism and large value art, where seventy-two of our sixth graders that were in first school or art were able to each have an image that they were supposed to shade. They were not aware what the image would be when it all came together, so we're really proud of the eagle that appeared, we're going to figure out a way to display it for years to come, because we really feel like this is a tremendous magic that we're going to do to keep them in school. And then, we're to the brighter picture to Mrs. Hayden's STEM classes, that has started this year. We appreciate you letting us add STEM to the curriculum, and Mrs. Hayden is going to introduce some of our awesome STEM students who are here today to present to you some of the things that they've been learning.
Thank you. We officially have quarter one STEM under our belts. On the screen here, you can see some things that we've done in the classroom. The top photo in the center, going to the center of the screen and over to the right in an L shape, those are all from our very first visit from a traveling STEM lab, sponsored by the Scouting America Group, and they're going to come each quarter, so our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders will experience the traveling lab every quarter. The fifth graders change over each quarter, so every fifth grader will experience the lab as well. In the upper right-hand corner, we have one of our guest speakers, I've been trying to bring the community in as an outreach project. This was a pilot from Southwest Airlines, Southwest Airlines has an adaptive pilot program where the students can track mileage, speed, elevation, and track their pilot through their journeys. And then, at the very bottom, those are our eighth graders, and that was just the other day, got into the photo folder for that one. We're doing a little bit of novel engineering with the eighth graders, and that is where we read a story and then connect the story to some type of engineering. So, we read a book called Two Tall Houses, and we had a very quick, I think they only had seven minutes to build, a very quick challenge to see who could make the highest tower in those seven minutes. So that was really fun. With me here tonight, I have two fifth graders, Zanaya Major and Katie Meyer, and I have two seventh graders, Max Cotton and Parker Meyer. And Katie and Zanaya are going to show you the VR headsets that we have, not just for the STEM lab, but for the entire middle school. This is a way, like Mrs. Miller said, that we can bring learning to life, so the things that I have, well, we'll actually do that one when the boys stand up.
Okay. It's okay. Sorry, my fault, I told her to.
It's okay, so I loaded, I preloaded a playlist for you that we've actually used in the classroom, and the girls are going to walk you through how to put on the headsets, and then you'll just get to experience some things that we've done in the class as well. Girls, you want to come up and start passing these out? Or would you like me to pass them out and you start talking?
I could pass out.
Should Mrs. Miller and I start talking or you start talking? So, how can our board members put these on?
So, you lift up, you first take out the sticky note and the controller from the VR headset, and then you lift up, you lift up the gray strap, and then you put it on your head, and if you, and if you have bangs, you would want to lift them up, because there's forehead sensors that turn them on. I had, I had trouble with that when I got my VR for like two months, because I didn't realize a forehead sensor.
Thank you.
Where should we, should we put them on?
Before you put them on.
But first.
Oh.
What's that?
You put in the controller and the little button there.
So, you should be seeing... If it's blurry, girls, what should they do if it's blurry?
I mentioned I'm scared of heights.
You should, it should be snubbed, snubbed to your face, it should not be blurry, you might need to adjust the headset up or down or closer to your face. And what you're looking at right now is, it's a flight simulator of the 1903 Wright Brothers' flyer that they took out for four successful flights. These VR headsets were created so that you don't have to move your body, you can stay seated the full time, and just look around at your surroundings.
Were the Wright Brothers actually this high?
Well, this is a simulator, so they do not, it's not very secured in there. Do you see a money maze?
Yeah.
Oh, no. What does your post-it say? I see it, but like the... You're Wonderful Jay. They all have very fun names.
Habs been working on budgets all day, so he sees money.
As you click the little button, you move in closer.
You're getting ahead of him.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, we're not connected to the wifi on this one. Ladies, what's next on your to-do list?
How to, how the UV light cleans the headsets after each use. So, there's you, there's a box, and you put the, you put the headsets in the UV box, and it cleans them after each use. And it's a little like that comes down and...
So, I'm willing to change your screen, as the teacher, on the teacher end, you have full control to lock your students into a specific track on the playlist. So, right now, you're, you're being dropped into... A Native American site, and this is an exploratory scene, which means you can use the joystick on the controller to walk around, and you can actually get into the huts and the TPs, and this is an extension of their social studies unit, so they're actually able to see the artifacts and things kind of in real time, in real life, that they learned about in the classroom.
You can walk around using the joystick. Yeah, you can, you can also teleport, and it's really cool that you can go near the Native American people.
I think I'm stuck in a teepee, I can't get out. I can't.
I think I win the flyer.
I had to turn my body.
Mosse.
This is awesome.
Take it off and just take a couple deep breaths.
I saw the south end of the horse.
Still on the teepee.
So, you can only go so far though, huh?
And you gotta back up.
I was trying to get up on those cliffs, and it won't let me.
We have like music going.
Yeah, who's got music?
Is that yours?
First the money, now the music.
So, I did not turn off the individual sound, which means you're hearing the sounds that come with that track on the playlist. There is also a headphone strap, so students can listen on their headphones, or I could turn off the individual and play the sound through the classroom speakers.
What are you seeing, Dr. Ganey?
I am seeing a lot of teepees.
Yeah, you can go inside them.
I was gonna say it took me ten minutes.
You cannot walk through a horse.
This is pretty cool.
Okay, so they see other things on the teepees besides this?
There should be some artwork on the sides. There are actual scavenger hunts too, that come with this program, so that the students walk around and find very specific things.
So, when guys like to leave them off, you, oh, you put them on side down, and you put the controller, you wrap it up, and, put the controller inside of the headset like the basket.
Zanaya, just do that one more time, a little bit slower. So, they're gonna put the headset on what color?
Orange, side down.
Orange, side down.
And you take out the controller and you wrap it up, and then once you wrap it up, you put it in the VR, is that like you're putting something in a basket?
Very cool.
So, sometimes something can go wrong, and before that, we do not know whose name is whose, so we have to look at like a specific, like thing around the thing, and then they will find that.
We're working with Mr. Joe in IT to get these numbered and labeled, so that it's easier to identify which headset belongs to which student. Girls, oh yeah, go ahead.
So, this is a cube, and basically, sometimes you can take a picture, and when you move it around, it turns into a 3D object, and it's really cool that you can see like, yeah, you can, there's a sensor, and it senses these, and then it basically places the picture, and you can move it around, and it changes like that.
We had a bat.
And a pigeon, and it showed you its body parts. There was one without eight feathers.
Trying to integrate this into other content areas as well, like the social studies, there's Storyland, so you can actually see some fairy tales, there's, oh gosh, what's the one? Nope, that one's not gonna come to me on the spot. But they're, they're, I'm training teachers little by little, so that the whole cart of thirty can get pushed into any classroom, math classroom, social studies classroom, science classroom. Girls, you did a wonderful job, thank you. All right, now we have Mr. Cotton and Mr. Meyer, boys would like to see a note for us? Would you like me to introduce you, or are you going to introduce yourselves? It's up to you. Nice and loud, guys.
I'm, so I'm Parker Meyer, I'm in the seventh grade STEM.
Yeah, my name is Max Cotton, once again, I'm in the seventh grade STEM class for seventh hour with Parker Meyer.
So, they're here today to talk to you about stop-motion animation, and we learned about stop-motion animation as a basic tool, which now we are integrating into their seventh grade ELA classes, using it to summarize their Edgar Allan Poe stories that they just read.
Stop motion is a form of animation that uses small pictures that progress with frames to then make a video like a slideshow a bit faster. We use small increments to make animations more smooth and look better by having a higher FPS, but instead of using large increments, which makes it look more choppy and with less frames, having more frames in a higher frame rate, which makes the stop motion smoother.
Now you might be wondering, what is a frame rate? First of all, a frame is a picture you can stop motion. A summary of a frame rate is how much frames per second, FPS, there is in a movie, show, et cetera. We also learned that we're able to show, we're able to show pictures now on whiteboards to work as frames. We actually used pictures on whiteboards for our first introduction for stop motion. It's a great way to start with homemade stop motion videos. We recommend cloud stop motion, you can use it for free, but you also have someone addiction.
Boys, I'm willing to interrupt you here, because Dr. Ganey behind you has Parker's example, and this is the very basic, broken down, let's learn how to do stop motion animation. This is the first thing that they came up with. It's a show of pizza, maybe one.
Do you want to do it again? Okay.
And then, on the next screen, or on the next slide, this is from another eighth grader who's not here tonight, but similar concept. We did lots of talking about techniques and making the ball look smushed at the bottom to show movement, and we acted a lot of things out to show what it would look like in the building process. Now, where are we taking it?
Free versus limited accounts in cloud stop motion have many different differences between them, though, for example, the free accounts, free accounts are okay, they allow limited access to pictures like, like limited storage and limited settings, and you can't save it, but with limited accounts, you have more storage, so more animations, and you can save your stop motions and have more advanced settings. Breaking down complex concepts into smaller steps in STEM, we can make complex concepts to more smaller and manageable fragments, so that the project we're doing seems a lot easier and not as stressful, like a story does. It breaks it down into multiple chapters or fragments.
We're also doing some Edgar Allan Poe stories in language arts. Although it might not seem necessary to help for STEM, it's very necessary for STEM. We're currently doing a stop motion project about some of Poe's stories, for example, The Telltale Heart, The Black Cat, and The Raven. All of those are very dark, serious, and sad themes, mainly because of the amount of homicide killing and bad thoughts all portrayed in the story. You might be wondering how this involves STEM. You can take STEM into multiple other classes, one of them including language arts. You can primarily take in science, technology, and math, which is why the name STEM stands for science, technology, and engineering, math. STEM can be used for future goals, for example, when I become an adult, I hope to become a mechanical engineer.
Great job.
Thank you for giving them the space to share with you.
Thanks for bringing them in. That was great. Thank you.
And you guys are welcome to stay, but you do not have to for the whole board meeting.
Yeah, that's true.
Awesome. Perfect, thank you very much, that was great. All right, tough act to follow, but now it's time for our assistant superintendent report.
Really tough. I can speak from experience, I got to go in when the seventh graders were collaborating and starting to brainstorm that Edgar Allan Poe motion animation, and it's serious business. Like, they were brainstorming, collaborating, and it was really amazing to see in the classroom. So, excited to see our STEM program continue to grow. I would like to talk and kind of switch gears to our principals. This past week, I had the amazing opportunity to go to a conference with all four of the building principals up in Naperville. As I shared this past summer, we've really been talking about how we can help support our teachers collaborate, and that's what the conference focused on, Monday and Tuesday. You can see right there, Mr. Dugan is excited, thumbs up, we are collaborating together, brainstorming how we can help our teachers do best practices and really focus on student achievement. You can even see Mr. Dugan over there, he was an overachiever, he is doing the poster for our group as well. We just had a really great time. The far picture on the bottom corner, we, the third day, on Wednesday, we had the experience to go visit another school district up near Naperville, Hensdale. I worked with that superintendent before we went up there, and they had an amazing day planned for us. They gave us breakfast, they welcomed us, four of their building principals presented. I did invite Chester and Sparta, they did join us for all three days, and we had some co-collaborating... Four of their building principals presented. Um I did invite Chester and Sparta. They they did join us for all three days and we had some co-collaboration as well. Um that picture is blurry and I wish it wasn't because you would see five administrators that really truly became a team over those three days. And it was a great day to be an Eagle. Um I can't tell you how proud I am of our four building principals. They stuck it out with me. They worked every single day with me. And I can't wait for what's in our future. Um the, oops, sorry. This is the Hinsdale visit. You'll see the the middle picture is Dr. Garcia. He is just as animated as he looks in that picture. He was excited to share the work of their district. He's also retiring this year, so maybe that is also the animation, but he was a wonderful person to get to know. Um and then the additional pictures are their building principals. Like they took time out of their day to come and talk to us about their success, how they helped their teachers collaborate. Um and like I said, our building principals asked great questions. They have connections and networks and as we continue to do changing, changes in our district, we have somebody um to partner with and help us. So it was, it was a great time, great, great time to be an Eagle. I couldn't be more proud. Um in addition, we just had our October Institute Day. That was a new student attendance day, but we did have staff here from eight to one. Um I I took another risk. I I had a speaker come for five hours for the whole district. Um that's a long time to sit. I was a little nervous. Um she was amazing. I I truly cannot tell you, building administrators, district administration received feedback from other teachers in the district that they loved the session. It was exactly what we needed. Um again, administration was sitting together. We are working together, collaborating, as were the rest of the staff members in in the cafeteria at CMS and I don't know, it's a great day to be an Eagle. I have the color wheel in the middle because one of the activities this trauma-informed speaker had us do was do the color personality, personality inventory, which was probably my favorite um part of the session. Dr. Grody and I are different colors in case you were wondering. Um we did learn that, but it also helped us with with the communication piece, right? When you know somebody's personality, you can understand how to interact with them in situations. Um and it makes things a whole lot easier. So it was a great experience and again, staff really seemed to enjoy it as well. Um and I wanted to give you a CTE, our vocational. Would be to have two workforce Wednesdays, one with a smaller industry and one in a bigger industry. We want to start to branch out and allow our students to have all different sorts of experiences in these different focused trades. For instance, January might be construction trade, so we might have a Columbia business come in and then we might try to find someone across the river to come in and meet with our students and talk about their industry and the opportunities that they have as well. The other thing is right now the workforce Wednesdays are 20 minutes. I'm working to extend them to 40 minutes to include lunch. We want to get those high schoolers to want to come down, engage, and have a true conversation. And if we're asking for bigger industries to come in, 20 minutes really isn't conducive to leaving their their place of work to come and only spend 20 minutes with our students. Really excited about that. I was talking to Mrs. Bedard and Mr. Reeves about that today. They're going to be meeting with the counselors to make some of this CTE magic happen. Um the other thing I wanted to touch base with you about and is on this slide would be micro internships. Always learning, always growing. When I was at the superintendent conference, there's always a session where other superintendents talk about the different things they're doing at their schools. One of those things um that District 155 is incorporating into their high school learning are micro internships. We already have our big pathway, but these would be 10-hour micro internships that I would like to embed in every grade level. So the picture up there in the slide is our ag science courses and you'll see there are courses in ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade. Our goal as a high school right now is to embed a 10-hour micro internship to each grade level. Um that and and kind of grow progressively, get bigger. That way students can get a taste when they're a freshman and if they don't really like that pathway, they can alter and have those conversations with their counselors. These would be unpaid. Um it would just so, we would provide liability insurance to the the workplace. Students would go briefly be there for 10 hours. I'm working maybe to get a credit for students. I'm not sure how that would work, but that's going to be a conversation that I have with high school administration as we continue these conversations. Really excited about the micro internships. Um high school administration and myself, we are zooming with District 155 next week um as we continue to get this process started. Really exciting. That's all I have.
Yeah, there's, I've I've given up. So I'm just gonna, one of the things I do want to say is that the 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 collaboration, having the admin team go up to to Naperville and Hinsdale to to see what other places are doing is so good because everybody brings a little bit to the table. You know, Dr. Ganey and I, I'm a green, she's a yellow. We're both firmly green and firmly yellow.
We are.
And that's okay because, and it's been fun with the administrative team because, you know, well, of course, because you're an orange. Or it it's, and and we're having conversations about our differences, but those differences and laughing about them is allowing us to be able to say, okay, well, let's try this then. I'll go out on this limb if you'll go out on that limb. And that collaboration is just making magic happen is I think.
It's making the magic happen. Good day to be an Eagle.
Yeah. Um the other part of this is though, we we are focusing in then also a lot on careers because like the the. Doing stop motion. So I mean, it's, it's just, it's cool stuff going on. Um that said, I'm going to tell you about the boring stuff. Uh CCSI, that's the um Career Center of Southern Illinois. They're moving. They are currently located with Perando, uh what town are they in? Is it?
I'm sorry?
CCSI, where are they currently located? They're at the Nike base out in the middle past Hecker.
I think it is Hecker, yeah.
Yeah, it's it's it's, they're out there. They're going to be possibly moving to SWIC. We are partners with CCSI currently. Um if they move to SWIC in Red Bud, they'd be a lot closer. We don't send many kids to CCSI. Uh Dr. Ganey, uh Mr. Reeves and I will be meeting to discuss kind of all the opportunities and what goes on there. And then on November 5th, Dr. Ganey, Mr. Reeves and I are going to their board meeting to talk about what that's going to look like. They are doing a construction project and gonna change what it look, what it's going to be and what it's going to involve. And I don't know all the details, so I don't want to say much more other than it's going to be something we're going to need to look at and see what they're doing, what the cost difference is going to be and where that's going to take us. Also, I've got a meeting with the city in the next couple of months. I don't know if you're aware, but they changed the SRO rules and regs regarding the abilities for them to write tickets. Writing a citation for vaping is no longer technically allowed and we've been working with the city with how we're going to continue because that program seemed to work well. Anybody that got a ticket for vaping at the school never got caught again for vaping. Um I'd like to say that that's because they didn't vape anymore. I'm hoping that's the case. I don't know. But uh we will have a new um, a new memorandum of understanding or intergovernmental agreement coming to us to consider the new laws and and how we're going to be using those SROs. Um that's really it, all I've got, so.
Perfect. Move on to our items for action. The first one, we is holdover from last month, the approval to purchase a skid steer and trailer.
Yeah, and um I put a memo in your, in the in the boxes. It's, we're looking at getting a heavy enough skid steer to actually be able to handle the ice, but light enough that it can go on a trailer without our guys having to get a special CDL to pull it. That said, there are some, you 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 mentioned you found a caterpillar that would have been within a nice price range.
Yes.
And and so um I'm asking permission to buy a skid steer with a, you know, the normal scoop and with a plow and a trailer to go with it. And I will have a committee that will help me find the right price and the right.
Perfect. And pretty much what happens with uh on skid steers, if we have a trailer that's over 10,000 pounds, even with a pickup truck, it requires a Class A CDL to to haul it, which our people do not have. So it's really important that we stay within, we only get a 10,000 pound trailer, not a 10,001. That way all the license will will arrive. Um the deal with skid steers, the bigger the machine, the more efficient they are, but the heavier they are. So we need to like a, pretty much the the lowest maintenance and cheapest parts are going to be the caterpillars. And I've identified either a, my recommendation should be a cat 259, 3, 269 or 279. When you get above that, the weight's going to be excessive 10,000 and we're not going to be able to pull it. So, but these would have enclosed cabs, air conditioning, heat. They'd be able to handle the big snow pushers. They'd be able to handle trenchers, anything else we need for the district. So it's kind of an all-around tool. Price-wise, I mean, you're, these machines new are excessive $100,000 easily. I think we would be looking at half of that because we can't get something used. We're not going to have, it's not going to be used every day. It's not going to be, you know, something that we depend on that that if it goes down, that we're just sunk. It's it's a nice extra tool. So uh I I I think we should proceed with that. But we, we're not going to be able to get a package with a trailer and a skid steer, so the two are going to have to be separate. So. Questions, concerns, comments?
I agree that we need that, but are we going to approve a purchase of something when we don't know the amount? I mean, I don't, I don't know how we do that.
My recommendation is to approve up to a 50,000 dollar machine, so not to exceed 50,000.
For both, skid steer and trailer?
Just skid steer and trailer. There's going to be another probably 10 on top of that.
If that's, if that's a realistic amount, then I think we could kind of have a ballpark.
I I think that's kind of worst-case scenario, so I'm I'm anticipating in the 40s. I'd rather go a little higher to, again, it all depends on the number of hours and the condition, the year, things like that is going to be. But when we're, when we're buying used, we can't wait a month and say, hey, hold this deal until our next board meeting. So there's kind of, um, you know, we're going to save it quite a bit of money, used versus new. So that's kind of the I'm not sure what I'm trying to say.
So are you looking that maybe we should make a recommendation not to spend over $75,000 for both skid steer and trailer?
That'd be more than enough, yes.
But if you can get it.
Yeah.
Cheaper than 75?
Correct.
But we'll give, we'll throw out the 75 so that you're protected in case you find something?
So administration recommends the board approve a purchase of a skid steer and trailer not to exceed 75,000.
I would outside accessories, so, because we're going to need the snowplow and.
So administration recommends the board approve the purchase of a skid steer plus accessories and a trailer not to exceed 75,000.
If the trailer is new, we're going to have to send that for bid. So if we can locate a used trailer, that's going to be preferable, but it's going to be, it has to be within our criteria, so. And that's also, I think we need to get a hydraulic trailer. You know, we don't need the ramps and, because people always forget to put the supports down on the ramp. It's going to bend the trailer and it's going to be a.
My request would be to buy a new trailer and a used skid lever. My experience with buying used trailers is you buy a problem. Nobody gets rid of a five-year-old trailer that's in perfect condition.
Great point.
So then the administration recommends the board approve a purchase of a skid steer plus accessories, 50,000, not to exceed 50,000.
We'll go out to bid for a trailer.
For those watching online, the the technicality is, is when you buy equipment, expensive equipment over a certain price point, you're supposed to go out to bid for it. But if you're buying something used, because of the nature of the used costs and the selling of it, you don't have to go out to bid for that. There's pluses and minuses on both, as we pointed out. And so in this situation, the machine is going to be buying used because that's the best deal and the trailer will follow the bid specs because we're concerned we'd be buying a problem.
And I I agree 100%. I would probably bump it up to 60 if we're going to go with. Well, we're going to go with accessories too.
Why don't you just stay at the 75 and if you can get it cheaper than the 75, go for it.
Well, 75 includes the trailer, right? So.
What, I don't know what a new trailer costs.
I certainly don't either. I've learned more about caterpillar and skid steers in this process. It was not in any of my administrative classes, so. Kind of like this whole group thing. It's good to have people that have other skills.
Special meeting, a special school board meeting just so that we can vote on the purchase of a trailer. I mean.
Actually, let's, I I like that idea. Let's stick with the 75 for the the skid steer, the equipment, the trailer and the equipment. We can still send the trailer out for bid and as long as everything's under that amount, we're good to go.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that work?
Sounds better.
Are we happy with that?
All right, so the administration is recommending that the board approve the purchase of a used skid steer and accessories along using the used purchasing process, but going out for bid for a trailer with the total cost of used skid steer and new trailer not to exceed 75,000.
And accessories, and I'll make the motion. Perfect. Roll call, please.
Hemken?
Yes.
Moyer?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Friedrich?
Yes.
Schumacher?
Yes.
Search?
Yes.
Perfect. And as you can see, when we make decisions like this, we have to do it in open session. We can't have private conversations. So that's why we had a little conversation and and input and good questions from the board. So that's kind of your board at action here, so. Just for clarification, everybody listening. All right, item B is a 2025 teacher administrative salary report.
This is a much simpler, what I need is for the uh board to approve the information that includes the salary reports for the teachers and the administrators. It's been looked over. It is correct. Once approved, it will be put online per our statute regulations of needing to post this information, so.
All right, any questions, concerns, or comments regarding the posting? Here now, we may like to make a motion to approve the 2025 teacher administrator salary report.
I'll make the motion.
Lisa, second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Schumacher?
Yes.
Search?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Moyer?
Yes.
Friedrich?
Yes.
All right, item C is the approval of the bids for the Phase 3 of the Columbia High School construction project.
And this is, as as we've talked about, you know, Phase 1 is that administrative offices, the classrooms, the auditorium. Phase 2 is the gym that's be, started construction behind it. And Phase 3, we've just come back with the bids to be able to do the flooring, some walls, a kitchen cooler, um taking the old choir room and turning that into part of the the um commons area, various other things. That's Phase 3 is tying those those two projects together and making the high school a cohesive unit. They went out to bids. We're very happy with the bids and Mr. Hemken's got the well-worded recommendation because we've got, Petker's working as our construction manager. So what we do is we approve the lowest responsible bids, get the contract with them, and as soon as we have the contract with them based on your board action, we convert those over to Petker because then they manage it, manage the contracts for us. So the lawyers have approved the NESC's motion.
So I'll make the motion to award the Phase 3 bid package, including general trades, concrete, masonry, drywall, flooring, plumbing, mechanical, electrical, and demolition and abatement as recommended from Petker Construction for the total cost of $2,744,614.60 and that the resulting Phase 3 contracts for each subcontractor be assigned by the board immediately upon this award to Petker Construction Company pursuant to their A133 agreement between owner and construction manager as a contractor, or as a constructor, sorry, with the district.
I'll second. Roll play. Roll call, please.
Hemken?
Yes.
Moyer?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Friedrich?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Search?
Yes.
Schu- Schumacher?
Yes.
Perfect. So, all right, so that'll throw us right into our facility study, which.
Well, I was just going to add what Dr. Grody stated about some of the stuff that's included. There's, there's also an elevator to the West Wing um and bathroom renovations, which will be, uh which some are long overdue.
Yes.
To some of the original bathrooms, so, um including a change to look and feel, so it'll be the same. Flooring throughout the entire school, old school and the new new addition will be consistent flooring and walls will be, the hall, all the common areas will be repainted. So you'll have the same look and feel throughout the entire high school. It won't, that way it's a lot more seamless as well as staining the brick on the outside.
I was going to say that has been the comment I've heard the most.
There's been comments about the new brick not being, looking the same as the old brick and it not looking cohesive and part of this. brick, and it not looking cohesive, and part of this Phase 3 process will be staining that old brick, and the construction company has told us we will be amazed at how well they match.
We were concerned that the staining of the old brick would be not close enough, or whatnot, and Ryan Fuller from Petker said, you will be amazed, that's, because they've stained brick before, and it's-
So, when it's all done, it will not look, it'll look a lot more cohesive than it does now, where you can, you know, there's a big difference between the existing building and the new construction, as far as even the brick look, so.
And actually, we had our bid opening, and all the bids came in, actually, much less than we expected. So, when we do this, we send it out for bid, and we say, these are the core items that we want. This is our wish list, and we're able to pretty much do every core item plus the wish list and get it done. That puts the entire high school, but, project now, bid confirmed and said and done, under budget. And so, as long as we can get it done on time now, which I think we're on track. We're on track, so, not going to know exactly, but, yeah, so.
There's change orders, so don't jinx this.
I'm not sure how many projects this size get done under budget and on time, but we aim for this one to be one of them, so. But, Mr. Hemmigan and Dr. Grody have spent a lot of time on this and holding the feet to the fire, and Mr. Reeves has input his opinions on time, timing, and delays and that sort of thing, which has definitely helped, so, it's a, project's really moving along, and I think it's a great project and great final product as well. Anything else?
So, next Thursday, the community will see the walls start going up for the gym, so it's a different construction process. They're actually tilt-up walls, so they'll be bringing in semis and a crane, and literally putting big panels up, so you'll see the wall go up, kind of like-
Three weeks in the shell of the-
In 10-foot wide, 30-foot tall sections, they'll just weld them on as they go, and in a matter of two weeks, two to three weeks, you'll see all, the entire outer perimeter of the new gym building will be-
Given that we are asking everyone that drives on Route 3 and veterans on that corner to have patience with our semis that are bringing these huge things in, and it's, traffic's never good there, but.
And thank you to one of our local companies for letting them stage trailers, so that we don't have logistics delays with the interstates, so.
Absolutely. That's huge. All right, anything else? All right, we'll go on to our individual board member comments. Anybody have anything they'd like to add this evening?
I wanted to follow up on the safety meeting that was done for the tailgating at the football games, to see whatever came from.
Yeah, we were talking about the, at our safety meeting, we did bring up athletic venues and things of that nature. And really, it breaks down into, there's two big issues. There are what every school district is dealing with, and then with what Columbia is specifically dealing with. And the thing that everybody's looking at is whether or not younger children can just be dropped off and be at the events unsupervised. We have a lot of kids running around, and it's been nice whenever you have a group of kids to have the parents there, or an adult there, that you can then have them come and grab them and have them sit next to, versus having to call the parents and have them come and pick them up. It's just a logistical issue, finding the parents, trying to get ahold of the parents, cell phones help a little bit better with that, but, so younger children unsupervised at high school sporting events, a lot of the districts around here are no longer allowing that. Tumblers coming into the sporting event. We sell concessions, our, when I say we, the band boosters sell concessions, a lot of districts are no longer allowing tumblers to come in. We currently don't allow food to come in, but we do allow you to come in with your own drinks, or the adults at least. And a lot of districts are moving away from that with the idea that support your boosters, buy your drinks at the concession stands. And then the whole tailgating before the event on the property, there's, you know, grills, things of that nature, and it's just, what's the limits of that? And so, a lot of districts are looking at that, and I don't know, we're going to look more into what's going to be involved with that, and how we can maybe set our expectations, or make sure we're clear that you, you know, this area, we're not driving around, we're not running around, it's not, and how do we supervise that? The CUSD-4 specific ones that we need to deal with is, we don't have a fence around the entire facility. With the gate that goes over to the middle school now, taking tickets has become much more labor-intensive, and now we've got people that are sneaking through the woods and coming into the field, or coming up through the park and coming past the press box and just, it's a, a fence is probably going to be needed. When we do parking at the press box area, we've talked about that building not being ADA, and when they did the construction, we've got it set for a parking lot up there. Well, when we get that parking lot up there, we're going to need to know, you know, what's that going to happen during football games? Is that, how's that going to have access, and do we need a ticket taker up there? And then there's just the open access. Our facility is open pretty much 24/7, and we are currently having a lot of issues with people not cleaning up their dog wastes on our field and on our walks. We're also had to change our lights, because people were coming in and turning on the lights at night, and doing the soccer games, and then not, and then there's, the penalty kick area of the turf has been replaced more times than not, and it's always the side closest to the door, so you park there, you go out, you do your penalty kicks. They never go to the other side and do the penalty kicks at the far side, and so we wear that out. So, those are the CUSD-4 specific areas, I think we're going to need to probably start locking down that facility more. But then, when we do have events there, it's just, it's becoming harder and harder to control and maintain, because we have access from all the areas, and we do allow a lot of freedom, and so we're going to need to look at that. So, I have no specific answers for you now, but those are some of the things that we're going to be looking at for the following years. Next year, because of football, and maybe the girls' soccer team.
And our next meeting is January 21st.
Thank you.
And it's something that I had suggested at our meeting this past week, is that we bring some drafted expectations to break up into committees, just to talk about what they think would be valuable to maybe set expectations for athletic events and venues in the upcoming year. We've also been working with our SRO, he is one of the leaders in this, with this committee of individuals.
I think the second question I get all the time is, why doesn't the screen ever turn off?
The scoreboard.
It's very bright. It's very bright, I mean, it's like a landmark when you come into town.
Um, yeah, I don't, I mean, because the idea was, it's going to be a billboard for us to start-
Right.
-to announce things and stuff like that, and if it turns into an issue like the, I know the soccer fields down by Bluff Road, they've had issues with their lights being bright and stuff, and so if, I would encourage that whenever someone brings that to you, have them call the district office, because if it is a bother, we don't want to be a nuisance to the community.
I think it's just a question, I think it's just a question, like, why is it always on? I don't know if it's necessarily a bother. I don't even know why they would need to turn the lights on to do penalty kicks, you could just see from the board.
To be fair, the lights being turned on and us having to, you know, lock that down more, happened before the new scoreboard.
Oh, okay.
So, but I don't think the scoreboard's on on the other side, too. I think the, the big one that faces the field is not on.
It's just the one facing the road.
It's just the one facing the road.
I'm not on the field at night, when nobody else is there, so I don't know what's on the other side.
She says that because, you know, as a soccer fan, I know you're out there doing the penalty kicks.
Yep.
We should probably look at that, maybe, put it on timer for midnight to whatever, save a little energy possibly.
That's kind of what my thought was, it's like, that's a lot of energy that's being used all day, every day.
All right, I will look into that.
Give me some homework.
I do appreciate that the side facing the road is no longer just an eagle, and that it does have information scrolling on it now, so the intended purpose is now being realized in some-
Yeah. That involved an additional server or something. It involved an additional aspect that was not originally, we had, yeah.
And I guess while we're on the scoreboard note, the Phase 3 renovation will include new scoreboards for the gym.
Yeah.
We had talked previously about, we bought new ones, but we're unsure whether or not we need them. We just approved, we will leave the new scoreboards in the old gym, and we'll have new ones, we will purchase new ones for the gym being constructed.
Is there any information on the cell tower?
I think that's kind of dead, yeah, so.
Yeah, they would have to get their, I, they do not want to go through the city zoning with a, with a understanding that it, that might not happen, so they don't want to put in that effort to-
There's nothing we can do without city zoning, so we just refer them to the city. If they want to go through the zoning and get that, then we'll revisit it if they get the zoning, if they don't, then it's a, it's a dead issue. Anyone else?
The executive session is just for B.
Okay, all right. You missed the board presence prerogative, that's my favorite.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry, I don't have anything anyway, so, just, I'll leave it at that. All right, we do have an executive session this evening for the purpose of student disciplinary cases pursuant to 5 ILCS, 120/2C9. With that, would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn into executive session?
Motion.
Thank you, second?
I'll second.
Can you, roll call, please?
Meyer?
Yes.
Search?
Yes.
Schumacher?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Moyer?
Yes.
Friedrich?
Yes.
Hemmigan?
Yes. All right, for all you in here, we have to excuse ourselves unfortunately. We do have one item for action, possibly as a result of our executive session, you're more than welcome to come back and hear that, but we understand if you don't want to, because I probably wouldn't, so. But thank you for joining us.
All right, we are back in open session. It's 8:58 PM. We do have one item for action regarding our executive session. And that's to consider student discipline. Would you like to make a motion regarding student discipline?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President.
So I move that the board expel student number 2025001 from Columbia Community Unit School District Number Four for the period of two years from October 1st, 2025, through and including October 1, 2027, based on the evidence presented at the expulsion hearing and the board's determination that the student engaged in egregious conduct and that the student's continued presence at school poses a threat to the safety of other students and staff and substantially disrupts the operation of the school. The board further finds that given the severity of the student's misconduct, there are no other appropriate disciplinary interventions available and that the presence of the student at school will foster a culture that the student's behavior at school is acceptable or tolerated. The board further finds that the student's expulsion shall not be held in abeyance because the board determined that the student poses a substantial risk of harm or injury to other students. The student during the period of the expulsion is prohibited from attending or being present at any Columbia Community Unit School District Number Four school-related events, whether or not the event is on or off school property, and shall not enter upon any Columbia Community Unit School District Number Four properties at any time, except with the prior written permission of the superintendent.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion on the table. Do you want to hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Andrea Corey.
Yes.
Kelly Moyer.
Yes.
Greg Meyer.
Yes.
Lisa Schumacher.
Yes.
Tyson Surge, yes.
Noreen Frederick.
Yes.
Adam Hemmigan.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Last item on the agenda is a motion to adjourn. Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. That concludes our meeting. 9 PM. Thank you very much for joining us.